So before I get into the agenda and whatnot, I'd like to, I'd like to lead off by, by thanking my custodial staff and our maintenance crew in Port for the amazing work that we've done and getting the buildings prepared to have students in as well as address any, all of the, the requirements that needed from Ride and, uh, and the Rhode Island Department of Health to make sure that the buildings were as safe as possible for kids to come in. They have been doing some amazing, amazing work, uh, to get us ready. So Jeff Watson, his crew, uh, Rob Young and, you know, the maintenance, it's, it's been fantastic, the, the work that they've done. Um, on top of that, I'd love to, I'd like to thank my, my clerical staff, Aida, Trish, Joanne, the folks that have been in the building, you know, up until this point, you know, helping us prepare to have kids re-enter and, you know, making sure that we're communicating everything that we would like to. So thank you to you guys. You've done an amazing job as well. We wouldn't be here in this spot without you guys. So, um, so tonight's agenda, um, here, these are, we're going to do introductions and we're going to kind of look at the beginning of school in three categories. What the school day will look like, uh, technology and then safety.
Hi, nice to meet you. I'm Sashal. Sashal, that's a cool name. Did your parents give you an interesting middle name too? Yeah, you know, a lot of people hate their middle names, but I actually think mine's really pretty. It's Distance. Distance? Sashal Distance? Yeah. And hey, meet my sister Quarantino.
So I'm, uh, I'm Mr. Vance. I'm the principal of Rogers High School. Uh, many of the folks that are on this, you know, on this call right now know, know me already. Um, and then we have on the call as well is, uh, Mike Monahan, uh, my assistant principal, uh, Robert Young, the director of NAC Tech and Kerry Clark, the NAC Tech coordinator. So we'll, we'll get into the, the school day and talk about the, the, the setup in classrooms. And the, the image that you see right here is already one of our classrooms and how our custodial staff had set these up. Um, so all of the desks are six feet apart. Uh, windows will be open, fans will be going. Uh, the class size will be roughly between 13 to 15 students based on the schedule that we, we've proposed. Um, students are going to have to be, have to wear us the entire time. They are not gonna really be, they're not gonna be interacting with each other. They're gonna be at their desks, uh, different than the, like a middle school or an elementary school. Our folks are gonna, are gonna need to travel from class to class. And so we've, we've spaced out what that looks like. So there's time in between each class for, for cleaning and allowing, you know, the students to travel from one space to the next.
Um, sorry, Karen Palmer is presenting right now accidentally. Could, uh, you please take that down? Thank you.
Not a problem. Is Karen still presenting?
Look it down, but now I'm not seeing your presentation.
No, I know. I pulled mine down. I thought that's why. So let me, let me.
She's on now. Sorry for interrupting.
And so, so what we did is we, we walked the school for the presentation and took and documented what classrooms looked like in the setup. So people would see the different areas of the building and how those classrooms were set up. Um, you know, to the far left is our social studies and then we have our science, math and English. Um, and as you can see, those, those desks are pretty well spread out. And in the science, in the science classroom where they are work benches, um, we're, we're limiting one child, one child to a bench so that those were, were spread out. So what, what the students and the staff will be, you know, experiencing as their schedule, um, is, is this here with a, you know, a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, um, schedule that is, that is A B. And by A B, we mean the, the, the students, 50% of the students will be in the building at a time. That will be, they'll be divided by alphabet. So Tuesday and Wednesday, the students with the last names that start with A through M will be in the building and Thursday, Friday will be the students with N through Z, the beginnings of their last names. Um, and on Tuesdays, they'll have four, four classes, peers one, three, five and seven. Wednesdays, it'll be two, four, six and eight. Um, and unlike last year where our courses were, our classes were 80 some odd minutes, um, for this, in this time, we've shortened those to be about 65 minutes. You know, so it's, it is a little bit of a reduction, but what that allows us to do is to be able to run those four classes in the morning and have students be out of the building by 12:30 on their way home. You know, so their, their, the start of their day will be 7:30. So they'll arrive at school and come into the building, into their crew period, and then they'll start their day. And then they are leaving by 12:30 grabbing, grabbing lunch on the way out, um, by that time. On Mondays, there will be no students in the building. It'll be asynchronous learning. So there will be assignments and curriculum that will be, uh, delivered so students can work at home. Um, and our faculty will be in the building offering up office hours and remedial sessions and, and, you know, one-on-one or small group kind of interactions with students as well as giving our custodial staff an opportunity to clean more of the building. Um, so this is a, so what we're, we're working on, uh, like many, many districts in Rhode Island is a phase-in approach. Um, so we were, we're trying to limit the amount of students in the building and slowly increase, um, over the course of the, the first month of school. Um, and again, this is, this is tentative. It is a draft. We're waiting for final approval. Um, so knowing that our draft, we would start with having all of the ninth grade in following that A B schedule that we just talked about, you know, with Monday being distance and then Tuesday through Friday would be that, you know, that A B schedule, uh, with the division of students. And then, um, all of the other grades, so 10 through 12, and students that have elected to be in full distance would be doing distance learning. So they would be receiving their curriculum while they're at home and they would not be in the building. Um, and so that would be week one and week two. So the, the weeks of September 14th and September 21. When we get to September 28th, that week, the week of September 28th, we would reintroduce grades 10, 11 and 12, um, and begin that A B schedule with all of the students in the building. You know, so this, uh, again, so this gives us an opportunity to, to kind of see, uh, what are our, how are our cleaning practices going? What, what do we need to do to make sure that, uh, the traffic flow in the hallways and students, how they access the building and exit the building? Um, there, we don't have any bottlenecks or kids grouping together. Um, it gives us an opportunity to, to, to run with some of the cleaning equipment, which, uh, Mr. Young will talk about later, um, and making sure that we're able to do the things that we need to, to keep the building safe and clean. What, what people also need to know is that at the beginning of the day, at that 7:30 time, uh, when students enter the building, we're going to be offering breakfast. And it's a grab and go breakfast. So they will be, they will enter the building and there will be stations set up at the, the different entry points into Rogers where students will grab their, like a bagged breakfast and they will bring that to their crew period. But they'll have an opportunity to eat, um, during crew and before the academic day starts. Similarly with lunch, we're, we're not using our cafeteria for lunch. Um, we're using it for, as our isolation space for students that potentially have or have exhibited COVID, COVID, uh, symptoms or something along those lines and they're waiting to get picked up from parents. So we're not using the caf, uh, for a lunch or breakfast. So at lunch, it, again, it's grab and go. So students would leave, you know, from the, the, the exits that they were assigned to enter the building. So they would leave in those same areas and on the way out, they would grab their lunches as they go to the buses to head home. Um, and again, we will be do, kids will be leaving Rogers at 12:30. And we used to have the, the dinner program, which was right after school. We're suspending that until, uh, we're in, you know, different times and the, the issues around COVID and quarantining and, and social distancing and things along those lines are no longer, um, relevant. So we're gonna shift to technology. I think I missed something. Hold on.
Um, I have a question. My son takes, um, special ed bus and they pick him up in front of the house. Um, will that special ed bus will be picking him up?
So you, you kind of broke up a little bit. So are you asking if the, if the special ed transportation will still be picking your child up in front of the house? Okay. Um, so it will, uh, that, that kind of transportation will continue to run as it has.
I don't know if you.
I did.
Can you?
So transportation, that, that kind of transportation, the special ed transportation will run as it always has, um, particularly if it's something that's driven by an IEP. Um, so that, that pickup and drop off will happen where it typically has, it'll just, the, the time might be different. So that instead of coming home at two, that he, your child would be coming home at the, around that 12:30 time.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so for students that are, that are entering that do not have their Chromebooks, um, we, we will be doing Chromebook distribution for those students, um, between September 8th, 8th to the 10th. Um, you know, that's a Tuesday through Thursday between eight and 2:30 by appointment only. Um, Mr. Mark Gaynor will be the individual who will be, be distributing those Chromebooks. And so we've left his contact, um, information here. So you can email him or you can call to set up an appointment to come over to the NAC Tech building. So this is in the, the building behind Rogers, not the, not the main building, um, at 109 Old Fort Road, Newport. Um, you, this information was emailed out to folks earlier. Um, and so a part of that email, there was a Chromebook loan agreement as well as the, the, some information on our optional insurance. Um, so at this point, I am going to ask Mr. Monahan to speak a little bit to Aspen and our student schedules.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name's Mike Monahan. I'm the assistant principal at Rogers. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about student accounts. Um, there are a couple of different things you need to know. First, uh, the login to a student's Chromebook. Um, most of the students know this. It's probably only new students who wouldn't, but, uh, your username is first and then your last name put together. And as an example, you can see my Michael Monahan and then year of graduation, two digit, digit year of graduation. So if I were to be a senior this year, it'd be Michael Monahan 21. That's how you log into your Chromebook and into the network. To get to your Gmail account, uh, and you can do that from any computer. It's the same thing with that, uh, suffix, that at NPSRI.net. And I'm sorry, the .net's not on there, but NPSRI.net at the end. That's how you get to your email. Uh, this is important, especially for anyone who's new to the district because in order to get access to Aspen where schedules are currently posted, you need to have signed in at least once to either your, either the network or your Gmail. Upon signing in, there will be a function that occurs at midnight every night and new students who sign in will have an Aspen account created. And then the next day they'll be able to access that. Many of you who are or have returning students who have been accessing their accounts should have received an email this morning that had information about, uh, signing into Aspen and, uh, accessing schedules as they stand. Uh, and there's also information about for your new students, uh, new families. Um, there, there are, um, default passwords that you can use that are listed at the bottom of the, uh, left-hand side. Uh, now just a little bit, I know there have already been some questions about student schedules. So as I mentioned, as of this morning, they were available in Aspen. Um, so what we do is we publish these, these, um, schedules. Uh, they become stagnant at that point. They're just a timestamp of what your schedule is as of 10 o'clock this morning. Uh, if you interact with your student's counselor and they make changes, that's not going to reflect on that program, on that, um, that timestamp schedule. But, uh, we're going to republish the schedules every day for the next, um, couple of weeks so that you'll see the change, uh, the next day, you know, after I, I, I have designated 10 AM as the time. Um, if you're having issues accessing either email, the network, well, you can't really access the net, well, email or, or Aspen. Uh, there are some websites here. The tech support website is for any kind of problem. If there's an outstanding issue with your current Chromebook, you can email the helpdesk@customs.com. Uh, if you have issues logging in specifically to the parent or the student portal, there's one email address where you can email, theparentportal@npsri.net. Um, I, I did put up a link and I'm sorry if I caused confusion. That's really for students who have accounts. They can access their counselors and make, uh, requests to meet with their counselors now for scheduling, but anytime during the year, this is something new that we're doing by using that link. Parents, if you need to get in touch with a counselor, they are getting quite a bit of, uh, activity right now because schedules are just coming out. And we do realize that many are, you know, not a hundred percent set. Um, that's part of the process is sometimes there are conflicts, uh, but send an email and give them a little bit of time. They're working on them as we speak and, uh, we're going to do our best to take care of you as soon as possible.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Um, so along the lines of this, right? So if you don't, if you're one of the, our new students and you don't, didn't get, or you guys have not received these things, I need you guys to reach out to us. Um, and same thing with, uh, the new student, um, students that are coming to Rogers and NAC Tech that possibly don't have Chromebooks. If you didn't receive an email, um, about the Chromebook distribution, um, we need you to reach out or a phone call if you didn't, you know, receive that. I need you to reach out to myself or, you know, Mr. Monahan or Mr. Young. Um, our emails are on the top slide. So, um, that way we can take care of you before your, your children arrive in the building.
Soap is an amazing substance. Each soap molecule is like a string with water that sticks to oil or fat. So take a look at this. This string floating on water represents a coronavirus molecule. Watch what happens when we touch the surface of the water with this bar of soap. Three, two, one. The molecule falls apart. That's why you gotta wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. Woo! Take that, boyer's molecule.
You know, so a, a part of, uh, the safety in the building, and this is, the, this is general guidance from the Department of Health, you know, washing our hands on a regular basis. So, you know, if kids are in the bathroom or they're, or they're doing things that, you know, if they have an opportunity, we need them to wash their hands. And it's really about using the soap, um, to, to, to make sure that their hands are not contaminated with things. What we're also doing, um, we're using a similar protocol that hospitals use with, um, foaming in and foaming out of, of spaces, right? So at Rogers, every one of the classrooms is outfitted with one of these, uh, antibacterial foam dispensers. And what we're asking students and staff to do is to every time that they exit a room, they foam out. And then every time that they enter a room, they foam in. So it doesn't matter whether you're leaving or coming, you are using that antibacterial foam to make sure that your hands are sanitized. Um, it's just another layer of safety that we can do, uh, to mitigate exposure. What we're also doing is between each class, uh, students, student desks will be wiped down with disinfectant as well as the high contact points. So if a, if a door is closed or, um, you know, a window needed to be opened or closed or whatnot, we'd be wiping those areas down and then the desktops will be, be wiped down as well with disinfectant in between each class. Uh, so that way, again, we have clean surfaces when kids are entering, uh, into a classroom space.
Greetings, everyone. Bill Nye here. Why do people in the scientific community want you to wear a face mask when you're out in public? Well, please consider the following. Face masks like this one prevent particles from my respiratory system from getting into the air and then into your respiratory system. Blocking the movement of air is an old trick. Here's a scarf. It blocks the movement of air around my throat, helps keep me warm. This scarf won awards in the Washington State Fair for both design and workmanship. It can block the movement of air, but only to a certain extent. This is a homemade face mask. It has just two layers of cloth with a pipe cleaner sewn in to help it fit against the bridge of your nose. And it blocks the movement of air very effectively. If you're wearing one of these, you're protecting yourself and those around you. Here's an N95. These are made to block particles in the medical environment and when you're out mowing the lawn. This one's not sterilized, but it's pretty effective. So the reason we want you to wear a mask is to protect you, sure. But the main reason we want you to wear a mask is to protect me from you and the particles from your respiratory system from getting into my respiratory system. Everybody, this is a matter literally of life and death. And when I use the word literally, I mean literally, a matter of life and death. So when you're out in public, please wear a mask. Thank you for joining me on Consider the Following.
Uh, I love Bill Nye. I think he's hysterical. Uh, so masks are mandatory for everybody in the building. Staff, students, um, teachers, parents, the nurse, our custodial staff, you know, Newport District employees, masks are mandatory in the building. It's one of the things that we can do, um, to really mitigate the exposure and contaminating each other and the spread of germs, uh, let alone the spread of COVID. Um, so our PTO, the Rogers High School PTO has graciously donated, um, around 800 masks to our students and to our staff, right? So all of, all of the students will receive their mask, um, in the mail and then staff will receive theirs not too, not too long, um, right, pretty much before the beginning of the school year. So that everybody will have one. Um, I, you know, I greatly appreciate that, that group of parents and their motivation and efforts that they've done to support Rogers over the last three and a half, four years. Um, it's, they are truly amazing with what they provide for us and the work that they do in the community to help support us and the positive messages, um, that we're trying to spread. So I thank them for all that they're doing. And as, as students of Rogers and parents of Rogers, you should be expecting a mask in the mail, uh, before the beginning of school. So some of the expectations with the masks, so all staff and students must wear a mask while inside, uh, inside the high school. And when we're talking about masks, we're talking masks, right? The, the things that either loop around your ears or tie behind your head. Um, we're not, you know, students shouldn't be wearing gaiters or bandanas. It has to be a mask. Um, so if a student does not have one, um, use the one that's provided by the PTO. Um, but if a student comes to school and they've lost theirs or they don't have one, we will provide them with one before they enter the building or just as they hit crew so that we can make sure that, you know, kids are, you know, have that mask while they're in the building. What, what we hope doesn't happen and, and kiddos understand is that it's, it's serious. Um, you know, similar to what Bill Nye just said about literally life and death, it is. So we need, we need students to take it serious, that they need to wear those masks and they need to follow all of our safety procedures. Um, you know, so for, so for some students, and hopefully we don't have any, but students that don't adhere, uh, to that expectation about wearing masks or any of the other health protocols like the, the foaming and the directions in the hallway, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Um, if that is done, uh, intentionally and habitually, we're gonna ask that that student, um, do their learning at home on distance learning. Um, you know, so they'll still have it, you know, exposure and access, but we need to be able to ensure that the building is safe and adhering to those expectations will keep our building and everybody safe. So our hallways, um, so this is a, this is a small, this is a picture of our math hallway. Um, all of our hallways have been, um, marked with directional arrows. Um, and many of our hallways are wide enough that they are two-way directions. So, you know, they, you travel on the right or the left, depending on which way you're going. They are clearly marked. Um, we don't have the tape down yet, but we'll be taping the middle of the hallway so that it's really clearly divided into two sections. Um, this picture, like I started with, this is our math hallway. And the math hallway is honestly going to be a one-way hallway just because of how narrow it is. And so we're only going to allow students to travel and staff travel in that hallway heading towards the academic wing, towards the library or prairie where the English and social studies and sci, and, um, yeah, English, social studies and world language classes are. Um, and if people need to come back towards the science wing or back towards the administration office, they have to follow the directions and then take the stairs and come back. But we're really, we've, we've mapped out and marked the entire building. And again, that is for the safety of our students and the safety of our staff. So this is, this is a, a, a topic that, you know, a lot of people, we've been talking about is the air circulation in our building. Uh, so Ro- Rogers does not have an active HVAC system right now. So we don't have a system that actively moves the air within the building. And so what we're, we're providing in classrooms and what we're doing to mitigate that air presently is the moving, we're using fans and we're fans in the, in the classroom, whether it's the box fan blowing out the window or a fan that is directed up towards the ceiling to create a vertical cycle in the, in the air. Um, we're using fans to circulate the air in classrooms as well as keeping all of the functional windows open. And then what we're also doing is, and we're going to be keeping the non-external doors. And so for people that understand the layout of Rogers, the ex, the non-external doors are the doors that open up into the courtyards. Um, we, our courtyards are fenced in and the fences have locked gates. So we're able to open those doors, uh, to allow fresh air in, in and out of the building. Um, you know, so we need to try and keep that air circulating as much as possible. We've also, we're also, um, purchasing large airs, air, HEPA air filters that basically circulate the air and scrub the air, um, to improve the quality. Um, before, before we get into questions, um, I believe Mr. Young is on. Um, our, our custodial staff, I talked about the cleaning process a little bit earlier. Um, our custodial staff is going to be doing a lot of work to make sure Um, our custodial staff is gonna be doing a lot of work to make sure that the building is, is clean and safe. Um, Rob, do you think you could speak to that just a little bit for us?
Sure thing, Jared. Can, you can hear me all right?
Yep, thank you.
So, so yeah, so Mr. Vance covered most of it, uh, in his briefing. But, you know, we've had some trainings with the Department of Health, um, and the Rhode Island Trust, who's our, uh, insurance, uh, program as well, on, you know, how to clean, what to clean, what to use and, you know, and how often, uh, to clean. So, um, so they have been trained on, on what they have to do in the classrooms, in the hallways daily. Uh, we have different products, uh, our cleaning, main cleaning material is called Vital Oxide. It's the same thing they use in the, in hospitals. And, uh, it is approved by the CDC for what we're, for what we're doing. But they have been trained on things like high-touch areas, so railings, doorknobs, anything that, that will be considered a high-touch area, they'll, they'll pay special attention to. Uh, we also have foggers and a mister. So at, at night, um, they'll go in or after school, they'll go in and, and spray the fogger in each classroom, which will have the vital oxide in it. And anything that is, that touches the vital oxide, whether it's in the air or on the surface, uh, that will actually kill the, uh, the virus itself. So, so they've been trained, uh, on all of that in order to do the best that we can to, to, to keep this building safe. Uh, they have a schedule, um, where they'll go in and, and, you know, soon as school gets out, they'll start, they'll start their cleaning schedule. So they will, and they'll make sure that they hit, you know, all the classrooms and the high-touch areas, uh, daily.
Thank you, Rob. All right, so I'm gonna, I am gonna pull the, the slide deck down so that we can, I can go into the chat and we can start looking at some of the questions that folks have had throughout this, you know, presentation. So two seconds. So, all right. All right, so give me one second as I get into the chat. Uh, all right, so Chris, if, if somebody is having issues with their schedule, they should be reaching out to their guidance counselor. So depending on the grade, Mike, do you wanna, can you just speak briefly to the breakdown of, um, from, of students in the, with guidance?
Sure, let me pull it up so that I, um, read it accurately.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so all ninth grade students have Mrs. Flo Hazen as their counselor. I'll, I'll type the three emails into the chat after I'm done speaking. But, um, so Flo Hazen has all the ninth grade students. She also has 10th graders with the last name beginning with G through Q. So if you're a 10th grader and your last name begins with the letter G through the letter Q, then Mrs. Hazen is your counselor. For grade 10, also last names that begin with the letter A through F belong to Mrs. Linda Moitoza. Mrs. Moitoza is also the counselor for students in 11th and 12th grade, last names A through L. Our newest school counselor, uh, Mrs. Stephanie Sullivan, she has 10th graders who have the last names that begin with R through the end of the alphabet. And then for 11th and 12th grade, she has students with last names that begin with M, as in Michael, through the end of the alphabet. So 12th graders M through Z, Mrs. Sullivan is your counselor. And again, I'll, I'll type those emails into the chat so that you can see them.
Thank you, Mike. Um, so many of the, many of those initial questions were on scheduling. Um, and there's information in the chat about emailing, uh, Joanne Gorman in guidance, um, to, to gain some information and access as well. Um, so Lucy is asking about kids that are on distance learning and then how will culinary arts work? I can talk to it briefly if, I don't know if Kerry, if Ms. Clark or Rob want, Mr. Young wanna speak to?
Jared, I, I replied back to her. So the culinary arts teacher is gonna contact her with his distance learning plan. He's got an excellent plan. Uh, he showed it to us, uh, the other day, so he's really leaning forward on, on how he's gonna, gonna tackle the distance learning piece. But I did answer her in the chat directly.
All right, fantastic, thank you. Um, okay. If students are scheduled for TE, does that mean they have to walk by the cafeteria isolation area? Okay, so if stu- students that are scheduled in with our physical education classes, um, yes, they would have to walk past the caf. Um, but our cafeteria, which is our isolation area, is large enough and we're gonna be positioning. We're gonna position the seats that those children have to wait in, um, closer to the serving side, so they're away from the rail and away from the hallway side. Um, so the, the, the risk of exposure is really, really low for somebody that is walking past, um, that location. Um, they'll, they'll be, they'll be separated from any of those areas that folks would have to travel in.
Jared, just to add, the, um, Department of Health was in and, and one of the things that they did look for is where the isolation room was. We showed them where it was and they did approve, uh, the location that Mr. Vance picked out.
Yep. Ashley, if you're, if you're returning your Chromebook, um, just email, um, myself or Mr. Monahan and we can figure out a time to collect that Chromebook. Yep, Rob's up, Mr. Young already has it. I'm sorry for my silence, but folks that have been monitoring the chat have, have done a really nice job responding to, to questions. Um, I'm sure we'll get the, the further ones down, but, uh, the initials, the initial ones most have been answered. All right, so Amy, uh, on remote days, will lessons be live or pre-recorded? Um, honestly, that is gonna be dependent upon, uh, the instructor. Right? Where many of our staff will be going live with kids, uh, to, to have that face-to-face conversation. And then some will be working on archiving videos to be able to present that with students that are at home, um, or other material, um, that is meaningful. You know, so one of the things that we're really working on is ensuring that the instruction that happens in the classroom, the information and the content is accessible for our students who are at home in a meaningful way. Um, in, in, in that, we're, we're really not just talking about here is, you know, here is the bulleted information, but, you know, are there videos? Are there readings? Are there activities? Are there things that can happen so that kid, you know, students build their understanding while at home? Um, so it, it is really gonna be a little, a little, a little teacher focused on, uh, who is providing that information and in what medium. So Suzanne, um, yes, so they will, so the students, when they're in the classroom, um, they'll be, they will be, we're, our guidance to staff is to have any kind of things that used to be paper-based, we're asking them to be digital, um, as much as possible so that the, the transmission of papers and things doesn't necessarily take place. And so they will be working on things that will be online, even though they are in the classroom. But when they're in the classroom, they will be receiving direct instruction from their classroom teacher because the teacher will be in that.
Emma.
Yep, I'm reading Way to Go PTO. Yep, like I said, like what I started with, we have a fantastic group of parents that are really trying to, you know, make the experience for their kids and every student in the, in Rogers, a, a positive one. They've done an amazing, an amazing job supporting us. It's, I can't thank them enough, honestly. Um, so the full distance days, the, uh, we're gonna build out, uh, we're gonna map out a schedule where teachers will be accessible from, for students at home. Um, and we are leaning towards that, that end time. Um, but again, so the time that we've also mapped out in the afternoon will be for some office hours, uh, small group work, you know, um, ramp up sessions if needed, things along those lines. Um, Michaela, so when we will be, when we will be in the building? Um, so if, if you are, I, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know. Um, so our ninth grader in, will be in the building on September fifteenth, September fourteenth is one of the, is one of the, the distance learning days. So the fifteenth, the ninth grade will be in the building and it will alternate. Um, you know, the kids with the A through M will be in Tuesday, Wednesday. And then students with N through Z will be in Thursday, Friday. And then once we hit the week of September twenty-eighth, all students will be in the building following that same schedule. So Ashley's asking, Ashley, this Myers is asking about the athletics. We're, we're taking our guidance from the Rhode Island International League on what they will be offering and what is available when. Um, so as they start to determine what is safe for students to engage in, we will be running those sports if those are things that we have run. Um, and so again, like, like school, athletics is gonna look a little different, uh, with what we're providing and when, when and how those things take place. So we really kinda have to take a step back and wait to hear what the guidance is from the Rhode Island International League. Students that are part-time, students that are part-time, they will, we have worked out with the, with sending districts, what that schedule will look like. So they will, they will arrive at, at Rogers for their CTE programs and then return back to their high school once those have been concluded. Um, um, Mr. Young, is he still on right now or?
We, um, we wrote back to her and, um, kinda explained it, but I gave her my emails. She can contact me and I can explain everything, walk her through all the details.
Fantastic.
And if anyone else on here is a part-time NACTIC student, same thing. Um, if you wanna hear the details, you can reach out to me. I'll post my email address again.
Thank you. Um, so Julia, so what's the plan for the winter? It's too cold to have windows open. Most certainly it is, um, at that point, if we're in this same situation, um, we are, we are purchasing those HEPA filters, which will be able to circulate the air in the building and scrub molecules from the air, which would then allow us to keep those windows closed. Now, I wish I had some like music or a video to play as I scroll through the chat. So you're just not watching me look at these, look at these comments. Yep, students aren't changing. Using the locker for PE. So one of the questions is, is are students using the locker rooms for PE? Uh, the locker rooms are not being used. So we're not, we're not having kids in the boys and girls locker room during the school day at all for the phys ed classes. And so that, with that, we're not expecting that students are changing. Students are not gonna be changing for PE. Um, and we're looking to, to, to run those courses very, very differently than we have in years past, um, with, with a high focus on the health curriculum and things that can be done independent for physical activity. Yeah, great. All right. Oh, that's it. So, um, five kids in three different schools and two students. Yeah, um, so I have, I've reached the end of the things that are in the chat. Um, are there, are there any questions that I can, that I can answer right now, kind of impromptu? So I would say if somebody has a question, have your video on and kinda wave your hand so that we can unmute you and hear what your question is.
Jared.
Hold on, one, one second, Holly. Um, Julian had her hand up first. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll get right back to you, Holly, one second. Go ahead, Julian.
Um, so with distance learning, just to clarify, are there di- like a whole set of separate teachers for distance learning? Or it's the same classroom teachers doing in-person and distance learning?
Yes, so our, so our guidance to, to our teaching staff has been be prepared for distance learning. Right? So they're, they're designing lessons and activities as if everybody was in distance learning and then adjusting for what's happening when they have kids in front of them in the classroom. Um, so it, again, it kinda goes back to, we, we're asking them to be able to present information in, in live, in person, brick and mortar, but also have that information be accessible in like a meaningful way for kids that are at home. Uh, so we're, we're not doing, um, we don't have another team of staff that will be providing that distance learning. Um, our, our staff is, is working on delivering that, um, to both, yeah, at home as well as in-school folks.
Okay, and just a follow-up question. So if, is it really teacher choice as far as like live streaming kind of stuff to the distance learning kids at home? Like that'll be up to the teacher, how they like reach the kids at home or?
So, so, so honestly, we're, so our fa- our faculty last year, when jumping into distance learning, really embraced, uh, the process and started working really, really hard. And so it's, it's, it's a, again, it's a, it's based on the individual teacher and, and, and necessarily, not necessarily, but like comfort level and how do they deliver, how do they feel like deliver information in the most effective way? Um, so some, some people will be doing it live, some people will be archiving videos, some people will be gathering resources that will, uh, be presented to kids that are home on distance. Um, so right now, we're, we're in a place where we're kinda open for how that, how that information gets delivered. But again, we go back to, it needs to be offered to the kids that are at home in a meaningful way so that they're not just reading a worksheet and, and clicking boxes or, you know, doing some, some more simple tasks. It, it needs to be relevant and needs to be meaningful for when they're at home. Thank you. Holly, I'm coming back to you. Where are you?
It's actually Monica.
It's actually Monica. Hi, um, I just had a question about Ms. Emma.
Yes.
At the end of last year, um, she did a really good job doing some Zoom calls. I was just wondering how they were all going to get together just because, you know, the students are kind of out of, you know, the seniors just, it's just not the same, you know, the whole college search, you know? I think they, they definitely need- You know, I think they, they definitely need some guidance.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I was just wondering what we're going to do with that.
So Emily, Emily's with us again this year. Um, and I don't know if she's on this call or not, but I'm, I would assume that she's going to do those, that same approach with getting, getting kids on a Zoom call, connecting with families on a regular basis, particularly as you guys, the seniors, start to explore one of their college options. What do they need to do? How do we schedule? How do we get people to fill out the FASF forms and get those submitted? Uh, you know, she's, she's done a fantastic job and I, I foresee her doing the same level rolling into this year, even though it is vastly different than it, than it has been.
Just to, to add to that, Jared, um, we developed a relationship with St. George's School last year. We had some, some virtual college visits. They got a, they got a whole lot of um visitors and, and I, we've been in touch with St. George's. They're going to be doing that throughout the year. So there may be the opportunity for seniors to, to have those virtual visits uh this fall before they determine where they're going. And for those who have students who are juniors, that's going to carry on through the year. There'll be more about that as well. And uh with the current situation, we're, we're going to be looking for ways to support virtually and in-person. You know, we're, we're adjusting and we're catching up with the technology.
All right, just one more question. Um, as far as SATs go, do we know what's happening? I mean, I have, we registered for them, but are we just kind of playing it by ear or?
At this time, the dates that we have here at Rogers are live.
Okay.
Unless something bigger happens that we'll all recognize because it would be some sort of a shutdown. Um, we're, we're ready. They're going to be smaller rooms, just like what um Mr. Vance has showed our classrooms to be. Uh, we're looking at the crockery and we're sorting that out right now. Uh, also, on October 14th, we are scheduled to have both a school day SAT and a school day PSAT. The school day SATs for seniors only, so if you didn't get to do it in the spring as juniors. The school day PSAT is for the 11th graders uh who didn't get to do the school day PSAT as sophomores. Uh, those are both on October 14th. There'll be details to follow. Um, again, that's all things are, are good, but uh right now they're live.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I went back and, I went back into the chat real quick. Um, so Mary was asking about English language classes. Um, yes, we, we are offering those. Um, and if, if you're talking, if you're asking about um MLL classes for students to acclimate to the English language, uh, we are definitely still offering those. Um, Polly, we, so the mo- the schedule that students will be follow will be the hours of the hybrid schedule. So even if students are on distance, they will be followed, they need to follow and be aware of um the hybrid model schedule and when classes are, are running. They need to, students really need to be focused on making sure that they are available for those live and, live classroom instruction that's taking place, even though they potentially could be at home. Um, yeah, Sarah, you're asking about the hallway traffic. Will we post pictures of that? Yes, um, the, we talked about it a little bit this week with staff, um, just, just to inform people. But next week, prior to the start of school, there will be a lot, there will be numerous messages sent home with a lot of really important information that people need to, 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 to look at and review before students start at Rogers. Um, things like the traffic patterns in the hallways, what are the, what, what doors are, are students supposed to access when they get off their buses, which, you know, which, where do the, where does the bus stop? And what a- what access points do they have into the building? Um, you know, all of those kind of things. And so we'll be sending that stuff out to students and fa- and parents to make sure that kids are aware before they come to the building. But know that there will be a lot of messaging within this, this next week prior to uh September 14th. Yes, and Carrie, uh, Ms. Clark, we really need to ensure that accurate, we have accurate email addresses in Aspen. Uh, that is our main, that is our main vehicle for communication. Um, and if those email addresses aren't accurate, people will miss messages. So um we need to make sure that that, those get updated uh in the portal. So do we have, do we have any other questions? Yes, Amy, the Chromebooks will have internet. They will, they will be able to access the internet. If students or families um don't have internet access at home, we need to know about that so that uh we have uh hotspots that we can help with, with students accessing the internet if they're at home. All right, so with that, seven o'clock. I appreciate you guys all coming out. Um, hopefully this was informative and if there are lingering questions or concerns, like I said, my email and Mr. Monahan and Mr. Young and uh Ms. Clark's emails are on the very first slide. Um, you can reach out to us with those questions and concerns and we'll try and clarify things for you as much as possible. But, you know, our goal is to make sure that when we enter this school year, kids are safe, people are healthy and they have the most positive experience they possibly can uh at Rogers. So have a great night. We'll be in touch soon. Thank you very much.